We do have a few minutes, but everyone could take their seats. That'd be great.
Oh.
Well, the computer and our clock doesn't match, but okay. Yeah, I do too. Oh, not according to computers here. Okay. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everyone will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, then please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Mathie.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Bergis.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. And we're going to start with recognitions and appointments. We start with declaring June 1st, 2018 National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And do I have someone here to accept this? Thank you very much. Come on forward. And if you could actually stand there and just announce your name.
Hello, my name is Tammy Mann.
Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, you pull that down.
Sorry, I'm short.
National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 1st, 2018. Whereas every day 96 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries, whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe, and whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 21st birthday, and whereas to help honor Hadia and the 96 Americans whose lives are cut short, and the countless survivors who are injured by these shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 1st, 2018, the first Friday in June, as the Fourth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 1st, the first Friday in June in 2018, to help raise awareness about gun violence, and whereas by wearing orange on June 1st, 2018, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe, now therefore I, Terry Renner, Mayor of Bloomington, Illinois, declare June 1st, 2018 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic events of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Therefore, I, Terry Renner, sign and seal of Bloomington affix this 26th, second day of May. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, clerk, whoa.
Sorry.
Oh, no, I was folding it. Thank you. Sorry about that. Yes, and actually, those of you who've come to support her, would you all stand, please? And we thank you for showing up, and thank you for your recognition. Okay, we next note the appointment of Dan Freeburg to the Citizens' Mutification Board. And I realize that Dan is here. Dan, would you stand and be recognized? And thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you. We also have the appointment of Scott Rathman to the Police Fire Pension Board and to the Bloomington Police Pension Board. Scott, are you here? Scott, thank you for your willingness to help. At this point, we move to public comment, and I just want to note that I do have a mayor's open house, and that is Friday before every regular city council meeting on, usually it's the following Monday, except for tonight because of the holiday. And you can go just by the back in the fishbowl and talk about anything that's on the agenda or anything that's not on the agenda, or get questions answered. The city manager was dutifully there the other day, and is usually there. We had Alderman Howman there, and sometimes other city officials will show. So if you want answers or you want to engage in dialogue with fellow citizens, that's definitely the place to do it. Under public comment, you have up to three minutes to talk about anything that you want, but our policy and practice is to not respond. So at this point, we start out with, we have three people who have signed up. You have up to three minutes apiece. Bruce Meeks, Scott Steinmerling, and Mike Maticha.
Good evening, elected officials. Let me introduce myself in case you've forgotten who I am. I'm Bruce Meeks. I'm a citizen of Bloomington all my life. I'm here as a nonpartisan. I didn't come here as a Democrat. I don't come here as a Republican, never have. I've never been paid to be here. I don't represent any organization but the citizens of this community and the heart of Bloomington. And I cannot support any future tiff
We do have a few minutes, but everyone could take their seats, that'd be great. Well, the computer and our clock doesn't match, but, okay. Yeah, I do too. Oh, not according to computers here, okay. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everyone will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, then please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Mathie.
Here.
Alderman Sage. Alderman Malumwe.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. And we're gonna start with recognitions and appointments. We start with declaring June 1st, 2018, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And do I have someone here to accept this? Thank you very much, come on forward. And if you could actually stand there and just announce your name.
Hello, my name is Tammy Mann.
Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, you pull that down.
Sorry, I'm short.
National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 1st, 2018. Whereas every day, ninety-six Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly thirteen thousand gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are twenty-five times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. Whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it. And are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 21st birthday. And whereas to help honor Hadia and the ninety-six Americans whose lives are cut short, and the countless survivors who are injured by these shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 1st, 2018, the first Friday in June, as the Fourth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 1st, the first Friday in June, in 2018, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 1st, 2018, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of Bloomington, Illinois, declare June 1st, 2018, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic events of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Therefore, I, Terry Renner, sign and seal the Bloomington affix this 26th, second day of May. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, whoa, whoa!
Sorry.
Oh, no, I was folding it. Thank you, sorry about that. Yes, and actually, those of you who've come to support her, would you all stand, please? And we, thank you for showing up, and thank you for your recognition. Okay, we next note the appointment of Dan Freeberg to the Citizens' Mutification Board. And I realize that Dan is here. Dan, would you stand and be recognized? And thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you. We also have the appointment of Scott Rathman to the Police Fire Pension Board and to the Bloomington Police Pension Board. Scott, are you here? Scott, thank you for your willingness to help. At this point, we move to public comment, and I just want to note that I do have a mayor's open house, and that is Friday before every regular city council meeting on, usually it's the following Monday, except for tonight because of the holiday. And you can go just by the back in the fishbowl and talk about anything that's on the agenda or anything that's not on the agenda, or get questions answered. The city manager was dutifully there the other day, and is usually there. We had Alderwoman Howman there, and sometimes other city officials will show. So if you want answers or you want to engage in dialogue with fellow citizens, that's definitely the place to do it. Under Public Comment, you have up to three minutes to talk about anything that you want, but our policy and practice is to not respond. So at this point, we start out with, we have three people who have signed up. You have up to three minutes apiece. Bruce Meeks, Scott Steinmerling, and Mike Mettika.
Good evening, elected officials. Let me introduce myself in case you've forgotten who I am. I'm Bruce Meeks. I'm a citizen of Bloomington all my life. I'm here as a nonpartisan. I didn't come here as a Democrat. I don't come here as a Republican, never have. I've never been paid to be here. I don't represent any organization but the citizens of this community in the heart of Bloomington. And I cannot support any future TIF districts. I've said that before, and I stand by that. I think there's an expectation that the TIF districts are somehow in economic growth to create jobs and grow the economy. It's an old tool. We need new tools. What's next for Bloomington, do you know? The Comprehensive Plan is no longer valid. There's some valid things in it, but we need to revisit that as soon as possible. We have a lot of changes going on here, and we need to be prepared, and we're not. But anyway, the TIF districts push the cost across the entire public spectrum. What is missing here is the cost of developing a private business has some public costs. The updating of the road, which we did for the green grocery store. We did a lot of updates over there. A lot of money was spent for that little area. And the schools, and the public costs that come with that growth. Unless spending is cut, and if a TIF really does generate economic growth, spending is likely to rise as the local population grows. Well, our population's not gonna grow right now, it doesn't look like, does it? The burden of paying these services will be shifted to other taxpayers. They always have been, and it still are with the TIF districts. So I hope you do not vote for the proposals tonight for, and look back and try to change this to not having any TIF districts. TIF districts encourage businesses with their hand out. They have financial shortcomings. We're not bringing in businesses that don't need handouts. The quality of businesses we could be bringing if we would get rid of the TIF districts, I think would go up once the word got out that you guys aren't politically influenced by outside companies and you're more important to your other small businesses instead of the well-connected change that enjoy the TIF-related tax breaks. In effect, the TIF subsidizes big business at the expense of the less publicly influential competitors and ordinary citizens. The original concept was for blighted areas. I don't think I've seen too many of our TIF districts we created recently were really, really for the blighted areas of the West Side. I'd like to see you spend some time on things you haven't done. Review the noise ordinance. There's a whole list of things that have not been done that you all said, "Well, we want this to come back to the council." Are you, is anybody keeping track of that list besides me? And the welcoming ordinance, I hope it never, ever comes back to this council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Scott Steinmerling, and then Mike Mettika.
Scott Steinmerling, Ward 5. I would like one thing to address, be addressed, that that is why the streets in this town keep crumbling. We always have money for the fireworks and other perks that you want, but yet there is no money for the roads. The people, you know, you get tired of hearing me say this, but it's true. I feel that the roads need to be addressed. If you don't, the people are going to leave the city, which they've already started doing. The taxes in this town are getting way too high, and the city cannot control their spending, and we go further and further and further and further in debt. Take the lousy money for the fireworks and cancel those fireworks and put that right in the roads, or does that make too much common sense? The other thing, you know, we have a noise ordinance in this town, but yet it does not apply to the fireworks. And noise is noise. I don't care where it comes from. If it comes from the fireworks, it comes from barking dogs at a boarding kennel, I don't care where it comes from. Noise is noise. Even screaming students at Westland. The thing that, we've got a well-qualified individual right in-house. Why go out and waste $20,000 on a nationwide search on a city manager? When we've got somebody well-qualified right in-house? Maybe we need an interim mayor, you think? Terry, you are absolutely, you do not represent the people of the city of Bloomington. You represent those with your viewpoints. Let's see. Okay, the city council should not be making the decisions on whether to have the fireworks. Let the people decide. Every sidewalk was to be ADA accessible in 1990. We're at 2018, twenty-eight years later, and they're still not ADA accessible. I've seen a little grandmother hike her granddaughter in a wheelchair up over that curb, and I went out and told her, I said, "You're crazy." And she called Jim Carsh, and by gum, there were people out there the next morning at eight o'clock to lay that ADA sidewalk. Everything should have been ADA accessible. I wonder if we would be twenty-eight years late in paying our property taxes, if our property'd still be there? You know, and I know good and well that it wouldn't be. Terry, we need to start learning to say no. A two-letter N-word, N-O, not K-N-O-W. I think, I'm all for the aldermen being elected by ward, but I'm also for them being elected at-large. Either that or elect all aldermen at large, one or the other. Because what, right now, what they're doing, they're playing, you know, they're protected by their ward. Also, they swore an oath to uphold the ordinances of the city of Bloomington to the best of their ability. And I've never seen you do it, and I haven't seen any of the aldermen do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Mettika.
Good evening, and thank you very much for the time. This afternoon, as kind of a last-minute thought, I shared with you, as you discussed tax increment financing, the idea of including a project labor agreement within that. And I think a TIF district can be a very viable tool for economic development. How do we maximize that economic return? And one way to do that is to ensure that the people who work on new construction within a TIF district are local. And one way to ensure that is with a project labor agreement, where anybody who comes to you seeking funds, at the same time, signs an agreement that they will hire local in their process with the local trades. I think, a second thing to think about with this, it's probably the untold secret of the construction industry, is the apprenticeship programs that the union trades and the contractors produce. If we took all the higher education institutions in the state of Illinois and included the construction trades apprenticeship, it would be the seventh-largest post-secondary school program in the state of Illinois. This is no taxpayer money involved. It is totally industry-funded, and it gives a high school graduate an opportunity to enter into a trade with a pension, with benefits, and with a decent standard of living. And by signing the project labor agreement as part of TIF, you would then be ensuring that young people in the community then have access to those jobs, and those jobs are not going to out-of-state, out-of-area contractors. It's a big decision. You're taking on a big task to reexamine how you handle the TIF districts. But I encourage you, as you have that discussion, to consider how the labor cost is included and to give a serious look at project labor agreements. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we move to the consent agenda. Are there items, any items that any member of the council would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve then the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Howman.
Mayor.
Oh, yes, excuse me.
Is that with the addendum for the minute?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, with the addendum. Thank you. Thanks. For some reason, I was not sure who was speaking. Okay, thank you. Is that acceptable to the, excuse, I'm sorry. I'm looking at you, Karen, because you usually make. Make her in the second of the motion. Okay, at this point, if everyone will go ahead and vote on the item as amended. Whoops, excuse me. The item. Oh, you do, okay. The item carries eight to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. Quick action there, Alderwoman Burgess. Okay, all right. Next, we move on to Item 8A, or our regular agenda. Consideration Resolution Improving the Rules of the Bloomington Safety and Commission Relations of the City, as well as the Board's brochure and posters as requested by the Board in consultation with the Police Department and the Legal Department. And I do want to say that since this was passed, I guess it's not quite a year ago, that's the number-one thing that I've had mayors from other cities contact me about. How, how did you get this passed? How does it work? What does it look like? And I said, "Well, I can tell you how we got it passed. We're in the process of trying to make it work." And so, anyway, I do want to thank the council. We're clearly innovative and on the cutting edge of trying to link neighborhoods and communities with our police and law enforcement, and it's not gone unnoticed. So I will go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Jurgens.
Thank you, Mayor. And it was actually on July 24th of 2017 that this board was created. They had their first meeting on December 13th, 2017, and they've been working diligently to come up with some of the, to fulfill some of the directives that this council gave them, including creating rules, procedures, or bylaws for the transaction of business by the board, developing a brochure explaining the board's procedures and the resources available to complainants, and developing a poster highlighting the resources available to complainants. When you adopted this ordinance, you provided that all of these were to be developed by the board, but then to come back, be presented to the council for final approval by this council. So tonight, although city staff has been available as a resource to assist and review what has been prepared, the true driving force behind this has been the board. And tonight, we have the board's chairman, Art Taylor, who's going to give the formal presentation to the council and answer any questions on what they have prepared. And with that, I turn it over to Art.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm so happy to be here to represent the Public Safety Community Relations Board. Since its inception, the board has been diligently working toward its goals of what the council set forth in its original ordinance, which was to serve the citizens, to serve as an advisory committee for the chief of police and city manager, providing a perspective of police policy, training, and to improve police-community interactions, to educate the community on the avenues available to citizens that are making a formal or an informal complaint to the police, and to assist the city and the police in clarifying and improving procedures related to those complaints, to add a resident's perspective to the evaluation of civilian complaints, including timely and fair and objective reviews of those complaints, to identify perceived deficiencies in police and community interactions that may address and result in improved interactions and shared understanding, and to provide fair treatment to and to protect the rights of citizens and the police. I've served on the board with, and at least one of those board members that are here, Serena Fish, if you could stand. Also served with William Bennett, Robert Bosquez, Sally Rudolph, Janet Lancaster, and Jeffrey Woodard. I was elected the board chair at our first official meeting in January, and I've been, I can't say enough positive things about the board and its professionalism and its dedication to the ground rules that were laid out by the council for the establishment of the PSCRB. And I'm so pleased that I'm able to serve with them and to be their chairman. We've held several meetings since the inception of the board. Most of those have been of an organizational manner to get ourselves organized, but primarily to work on the rules that you should have in front of you, as well as the brochure that will be available to the community, as well as two posters, that one will be located in the Bloomington Police Department, and the other one is available for other entities around the community to serve as a way of communicating of what the PSCRB is all about, and any procedures or processes necessary for anyone who may have a formal or an informal complaint of the Police Department, should that case arise. To date, we have not had a single complaint that has come before the board. And to me, that's a good thing. But the board is there to serve both the citizens and the police, and to be that vehicle to help inoculate the community in the event of any such event that could turn pretty ugly. No one wants that, and the PSCRB was put in place to make sure that that does not happen. We've had excellent relationships with formerly Chief Hefner, before he left, and now with Chief Wheeler, as he steps in. And the board has had excellent relationships with the staff, as well as the community, as was determined by our first quarterly meeting that we had on March 21st, which we asked for assistance in providing information for the brochure that you see in front of you. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about the PSCRB. Any particular questions about the board rules, and any questions about the posters that we've, that we have worked diligently on to make sure that they represent the community, as well as any language that we want to make sure it was, that it fit the guidelines that set forth in the ordinance.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Art. Questions for Art?
Questions.
Alderman Black.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. How have these meetings been attended so far? Are there a lot of members of the public, a few members of the public, sometimes nonexistent?
In our first quarterly meeting, which was on March 21st, we had about, well, I'd say about twenty members of the community that showed up at our location that was the church over here on East Jefferson. And we had quite a bit of commentary, quite a bit of interaction with those folks in the community. We answered as many questions as we could, but we were there more to get their input and their feedback on language that you see in the brochure that you have in front of you. That meeting was attended by all of our board members. They were able to introduce themselves and give a little bit about their backgrounds and why they were looking forward to serving on the PSCRB. And we were able to answer any questions that they might have had.
And I assume that that feedback was incorporated into the final draft?
Yes, it was.
And I can't remember if it was in the executive packet or something I've seen in the past. This will be available in Spanish as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. I, just for my own thoughts here, I like the rules. I think they look great, and I appreciate the work that's been done. The brochure looks good. My only small note would be that maybe we have a different picture on the front. Maybe the board standing together, you know, so we can see faces, because people, you know, if they see the face of someone that they might be able to reach out to, that might connote a bigger connection. But I know these are probably already well down the process, and that'll be something for version two at some point down the road. So, thank you for your service. I appreciate it, and keep up the good work.
All right, thank you. Other questions, comments? Alderman Malumwe.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your service as well. You know, one of the reasons why I supported this, I thought it would be good to have an avenue, you know, for people to be able to discuss whatever concerns they have. I am one who likes to live in harmony as much as possible, and I think by having such an avenue, you know, we have a chance at harmony. So I'm very excited to see everybody come together, you know, not only members of the police force, but as well as citizens and volunteers like you. One of the things that I wanted to know from you is how is this going to be publicized, other than just the brochures? You know, are we having social media or different things like that?
First of all, our meetings are on the second Wednesday of every month. That meeting is open to the public. It's advertised on the city website, and it's available throughout and in the media. Our quarterly meetings are, the first one was on March 21st. The next one is gonna be on June 20th. And that meeting will also be publicized. It's also, communication has been sent out, or will be sent out, to the entities that were instrumental in establishing the board in the first place, which would include, not in our town, Black Lives Matter, NAACP, Legal Women Voters. We communicate with the leadership of those organizations to let it be known to their members and the folks that support them, that the quarterly meeting is open to them, as well as our regularly monthly. as our regularly monthly meetings that are always open to the public. And unless you have some suggestions as to how we can better communicate that, that's, those are primarily the avenues that we use. Okay.
Other questions? Alderwoman Bray.
So Jeff, you probably covered this in your review, but when we think about Section 2A, confidentiality of sensitive information, if you could just kind of walk us through what that might look like, because some of these complaints could be very, I guess, have information that even the complainant would not want out in the public as to things that occurred, or if it involves the performance review or some of the performance of the police, how will that confidentiality be handled as the requests come in for confidential treatment?
If I may. A great deal of time was placed in our conversations about confidentiality, not only to anyone who may be presenting a complaint, but also to the board members who would be charged with hearing those complaints. Part of the brochure that you have in front of you discusses how complaints can be presented to the board, which first of all, it has to be done in writing, and it has to be a complaint that was already heard by the Bloomington Police Department before it comes to the PSCRB. Any personal information that could identify the individual who was making the complaint or the complainant should be redacted by the city legal department. And if I'm not mistaken, that's in the rules.
Jeff, do you have anything to that?
Yes, that's my understanding as to how they're going to approach it as well. We've got another attorney who's actually been working with the board on this, so I'm not as intimately familiar with the details of it. But if you look at subsection A, it does talk about the confidentiality of sensitive information, and I believe in the actual ordinance that was approved, the information that's going to be provided to the board is information that would be subject to release under FOIA. So they're going to have, they're not, the board's not necessarily going to have, you know, something that's in one of the police officer's personnel files, per se, or something like that. So it's going to be information that's related to FOIA, and I believe it's also then provided that it's more of a review of the process that was followed, to make sure the correct process was followed, and then finally, you know, to give recommendations back. It's not a review of whether or not the complaint was founded or unfounded or decided correctly or incorrectly by the police department. It's rather a review of the overall process and whether or not there need to be other implementational changes as part of that review. Did I speak correctly, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you for that. And so, just kind of a follow-up, so if a complainant wants this review done, do they have an option to ask for confidentiality of their concerns or their allegations? How did you address that?
Again, that was broadly discussed in our deliberations with reference to the rules. A complainant may file a complaint either with the Bloomington City Police Department, through the city legal department, or at a PSCRB public meeting. There is a box located in our meetings for anyone to drop off a written complaint. That process is then reviewed by the city legal department, where they will then begin the redaction process to make sure that the complainant and/or the police officer in question, those identities are kept confidential, so that at the time that the police, that the PSCRB reviews the complaint, then we don't have the identity of the individual who filed the complaint, nor the identities of the police officers that the complaint may be directed to.
Thank you very much. This is very thorough, and I really appreciate all your efforts, and please share that with the committee.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks, Lotta. Appreciate it. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
And the board, and Serena. Thanks. At this point, we do need a motion to move forward. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'm happy to make the motion that we approve, that we make a resolution that approves the rules that have been presented to us, along with the brochure and posters.
Okay. Approved by Alderwoman Schmidt and seconded by Alderwoman Painter. Any further discussion? Okay. If you go ahead and vote, vote's already recorded. Eight to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much, and again, thanks to the entire board for all their hard work. And I turn this over to Mr. Karch, who's already here, to the exciting world of corrective asphalt materials.
Well, we can make it more exciting, Mayor and City Council, when we say we all care about streets, and we hear about it regularly, early and often. And so if we keep doing what we've always done, we can't expect any different results. So one of the things that our staff and Public Works has done is trying to find innovative ways to continue to stretch the life of what we do have. And so we talked a lot about resurfacing program. Our thanks to you for passing that. We have that underway. It's been bid. We're actively working on that as we speak. City manager, city manager Rasmusson wanted to take this to you, so you could really see and get a sense of what efforts we are trying to move forward on. You can see how we break down the budget. What we're really trying to do is really have a very cost-effective way to stretch the life of the pavement. This pavement preservation isn't resurfacing, but it does stretch the life of what's there. And so whenever we approved that, you know, $4 million, we got out of that, you know, about 25 streets, three alleys. Now, this type of work, that was for $4 million for resurfacing, that costs us about $35 a square yard. Now, in comparison, when you look at pavement preservation, for the reclamite, it is about $0.88 a square yard, and for the C-85, that's just over $2 a square yard. Now, the, you know, whenever you look at the length of life of the streets, on the arterial roads, they last not nearly as long as the residential roads. But what this does is the reclamite stretches the life, four to seven years every application, and we're trying to just take this lifecycle. What you see on the screen, if you just resurface a street, we know that depending upon whether it's an arterial, a collector, residential, every year, the pavement quality goes down. It's a no-brainer. The biggest detriments to roads are the heavy trucks, and sun, and water. Those are, you know, those are the killers to pavement. And so what we're trying to do is the right treatment at the right time. And so what you're approving is when the street right away is done, we are coming in that year or within that first year to do a reclamite treatment. And I'll show you some pictures in just a minute, but then about four to five years after that, we come again with another reclamite treatment. And with the curve, what that does is that takes the curve and it pushes it back up. It stretches and lengthens the life of that curve out, so it allows the road to last. Instead of 18 to 20 to 25 years, we're looking for 30, 35 years of length for that pavement life. And so whenever you talk about dollars that we spend, we're going for the long game here. We're trying for the, not this isn't a, and next year, we're going to start seeing this pay off. We're looking at, you know, the 10 to 20-year mark. We want to start seeing that curve tip with our infrastructure, and that's why we're spending this money now. So we appreciate your continued support. We've been doing this since 2011. We've started, and we did this because of a pilot project we did in 2007, and we tried some things we started looking at as a staff, and we saw this really has some positive benefits. And so we really, really jumped into this. Now, what you're going to see is two different types of work. You'll see rejuvenator, the reclamite work, and then you'll see more of the C-85, the restorative seal. The rejuvenator, that reclamite, is what you see when we come in right after resurfacing, put the oil down, put the sand down. Then some people, "It's a brand-new street. Why are you putting sand on our street?" We're doing that because, well, I'm just going to jump right to a picture here to show you, so that you can see that top portion is the treated section of a pavement. It doesn't allow the water. The water will even bead on the pavement. And so the water sheds right off the street, it fills in the voids, it seals it. That is the benefit. When it's untreated, the water sits in the pavement, that's where it starts to do more of the damage, gets into that underneath of the pavement, it causes more issues. And so we're trying to, again, help one of the failure mechanisms for our street infrastructure. And so, again, tonight, we're just more of a quick education session. Thank you for your continued support. We're hoping that you'll pass this contract tonight, and we can continue our work throughout the construction season. Any questions that you have?
Thank you very much. Just to clarify, this is in budget. It's just the amount is the reason we brought it to the council?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Anything over the $250,000 mark, we do try to bring before you for action. The council's already approved this amount in the budget.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion? Alderwoman Halman.
First of all, thanks. It helps us to be able to answer questions if people ask about our roads, but I would move that we approve the contract and unit prices with corrective asphalt materials, as stated in our agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt for the discussion.
Mayor, I had a question real quick.
Please.
Jim, is the goal that, based on that, the first slide with the big curve and everything, is the goal that every street in the city should be done every five years? Is that, I mean, what's the long term on?
So the long term, the long game is this. You do, within that first year, you do one reclamite treatment. After four or five years, you come back and do another reclamite treatment. The C-85 is, that's debatable, because it depends upon, you know, when it reaches that rating of four, just before the potholes start, that's when you really want to do the C-85. We've done it on a wide range. We're still testing out when it's effective. But that C-85 is what, again, you'll see those limestone chips that come in. That's when it's the thicker, more of the thicker material, the limestone chips. We've improved even our own application. A few years ago, we had the dust storm that happened in Bloomington, thanks to Public Works. We were trying the new treatments, and so the limestone chips, though, we've been able to refine and get better material, and so that's more of that type of treatment. So the goal is to stretch that curve out to where you go to more of the, you know, 30 to 40-year mark. That's really the goal.
So then no street should have really more than two treatments ever, or?
Two treatments of reclamite, one treatment of C-85. We have actually considered, once we get to that pavement life, looking at whether we can do a second C-85 treatment. Is it worth it? Because again, a C-85 is $2.10, and resurfacing millinfill is $35. Those two comparisons, you know, you really want to try to stretch the life as much as you can.
Okay. Where I was going with this is, I'm not against this. I was just wondering if we're spending enough money doing this. That's really...
We actually are about to burn out our one engineering technician, who, Jeff Cole is his name. He actually was one of the, an award recipient. You're going to be seeing on June 11th. He won a statewide award for the efforts that he has. We have one individual that does our, puts together all of our contracts for paving. He does all the inspection. He does all the inspection for the reclamite and all the pavement preservations. He updates it all in GIS. So this is one person, and this is about the capacity of what he can handle. And so we're actually trying to find other ways for us to expand it, because actually, I'm a big fan of even expanding this program, but we wanted to do it in the right way. As we saw success, do it more.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. And so we have a motion on the floor in a second. If everyone will go ahead and vote.
One second?
You, I think.
Me.
Oh, you were the second. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going back to the previous one. Sorry. Never mind. No.
She might have thought it, but I did it.
Talk about the previous motion. Okay. The motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, and we now move on to our last item on the regular agenda of the evening, and that is the presentation and discussion of the city's utilization of tax increment financing as an economic development tool and possible action on a resolution outlining the city's guidelines for the utilization of tax increment finance as we discuss the city's community development. And we are going to go ahead and start with our city manager. As I understand, including Kathy Orr, and we have Barry Riley, we have others who would like to speak on this pertinent issue.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just wanted to introduce this by putting it in perspective a little. When we had talked about tax increment financing three or four weeks ago, one of the things that the council asked is that before we move forward on any other TIF actions, if we could somehow have some sort of a policy or guidelines about how we would handle TIF in the future, so that then the council could act on that, and then as we move forward, we would have some guidelines to operate by. And so what we're proposing here is to bring this back to you today, and so when you see this resolution for it, it says for possible action, so if at the end of the day, you like what this one is, you could act on it, or if you do not want to act on it, you could put it off, or you could modify it, and we could bring it back to you later. But I did want to acknowledge, first of all, that TIF in some cities in the past has been abused, and we acknowledge that, but we're dedicated as a staff to make sure that we don't let that happen in this city, because it is a powerful tool that can be used in economic development, and as we know, we have some economic development challenges ahead of us. But we're working to put together a policy here that would work for everyone concerned. And I know I've been talking to Dr. Riley, and I hope he will speak here again today along with some other people to express their concerns. And while we're not entirely in agreement on all the details, we are working together carefully with the school district to make sure that we have got some agreements that will allow us to work together on this and make sure that we use a TIF when it works for us, and that we make sure that it's not used in any wrong manner. And to that end, I wanted to ask Bob Martyr, Director of Community Development, to give us a little bit of background on where we are on tax increment financing and help people understand that, and then invite some of the other people here to speak, and I hope that Dr. Riley and some other people will come up and give their views on it as well.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. As long as we're at 500 feet, just want to say also, obviously in our community, the great partnership that Unit 5 and Normal has, you know, has certainly helped take an EPA Superfund waste site and abandoned buildings and vacant lots and turned into an engine of economic growth that's had great spillovers for Unit 5 and the whole community. But, so, we'll go below 500 feet, or whatever metaphor you want to use, Bob.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to have a conversation tonight on a significant economic development tool that could be used for the city of Bloomington. I kind of wanted to just do a quick overview of the prior TIFs within the community, some of the existing TIFs that we have in place, and then an overview of some of the potential TIFs that we might have in the future.
Bob, if we could just clarify, I apologize, and this will be the last one. Just to clarify, we currently have two TIFs in the city of Bloomington. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Correct. Thank you.
So in the late '80s, three TIFs were generated by the community. That was the Veterans Parkway Redevelopment Project from 1986 to 1993, the Market Square Redevelopment Project area from 1986 to 2009, and the Downtown Bloomington Redevelopment Project area from 1986 to 2009. That was a very significant one that encompassed roughly 54 blocks in our downtown area, very large in comparison to the other TIFs that we've had within our community. More recently, we've had the Empire Street Corridor Redevelopment Project, starting in 2016, the Downtown South Redevelopment Project area, also in 2016, and some of the ones that are in play right now and for further discussion is the proposed Downtown East Washington Redevelopment Project area, and then the potential North Main Chestnut Street Redevelopment Project area. So you have a general overview of where we were in the past, where we are currently, and where we might go in the future. So the first project I'd like to talk about was the Veterans Parkway Redevelopment Project, and it started in June of 1986 and lasted just seven years through 1993. And so we've talked, we've had these conversations before and with the school district about what is the term of these TIFs. And so what we want to look at is, is there opportunities, when the plan objectives have been met, to dissolve the TIF? And there are opportunities. We're showing examples this evening about how that TIF did meet its objectives, the TIF plan, and we were able to see that TIF dissolve after those objectives were met. And so that project went from Veterans Parkway along the east side, from Clearwater Avenue to Jumer Drive, and those major projects that occurred because of the infrastructure improvements in those areas were the Jumer Hotel and Conference Center, the Lakewood Plaza Shopping Center, I think at one time may have included the Walmart and that type of thing, but now has the Hy-Vee and a number of motor vehicle sales operations in that area. The next one is the Market Square Redevelopment Project. It also went from 1986 to 2009. It qualified as both a conservation area and a blighted area, and some of the notable projects in that are the Pilot Truck Stop, the Market Square Shopping Center. And I will say that many of those businesses are still in place. I think some of them are getting a little tired right now, but you can see from the infrastructure in that area that that... But you can see from the infrastructure in that area that that infrastructure is still in place and those businesses and the vacancy rates in that immediate shopping center are still current, so. The next one is the Downtown Bloomington Redevelopment Project area, and that went from 1986 to 2009. There was some carryover for some legal issues that we're dealing with there. But that area, the entire 54 blocks, was designated as a blighted area. And that's significant because the blighting factors, criteria have to be met, and there are very high standards in the TIF act to meet those criteria. And to have that entire boundary as a blighted area back in 1986, it was significant at that time. So, through that process, we had roughly 49 redevelopment agreements. Some actually created projects. Some were laid to rest. They didn't fulfill their obligations. But what the biggest thing that I'd like to stress here is that the equalized assessed value in that TIF area increased 145% over that 23-year period. And we can kind of go into that detail here. So, the equalized assessed value, when they started the TIF in 1986, was roughly $13 million. And at the end of the TIF, it was roughly $32 million. So, there was a significant increase in the equalized assessed value. And just playing some quick math, if we took a general figure of 2% a year, let's just say that's a standard increase in equalized assessed value, if we looked at that number of 2% for that 23 years, we'd have roughly $20 million of increment. So, you saw some significant increase in the equalized assessed value on this project area. So, I think that's something that does kind of show some success for TIFs in our downtown area. Some of the specific projects I'd like to kind of go over, so you can kind of see what TIF-eligible projects can be done in our community. So, this was the Russell Francois Offices, roughly 72,000 in public incentives that were provided to it for historic rehabilitation, exterior wall repair, waterproofing, and storefront restoration. And that building still stands. The Coffee Hound and Ivy Lane Bakery, again, roughly leveraging private of 182,000 with public incentives of 80,000 to bring that project together. The Castle Theater, which is still a vibrant business in our downtown area, the Castle Theater itself, we had public costs of 385,000, total project investment of 1.2 million. And also, the condo buildout on the upper story. You can see there the public costs associated with that. So, that was the renovation of the exterior of the building and the theater, including updating the plumbing, HVAC, electrical, new windows, and elevators. The McBarnes Building, we had an investment of 1.7 million in our downtown area, of which 466,000 was public incentives for the restoration of that historic building. And the last one, I'll call the Corn Belt Bank Building, a $2.1 million project in our downtown for the historic rehabilitation, the elevator system, and the office buildout. And that was undertaken in 2001. So, you can kind of see how TIF monies can be used to leverage some private investment to really maintain and enhance our downtown area or any TIF area. So, these are the new TIF areas that we have within our community and adopted in 2016. It's a relatively large TIF area, going from basically Veterans Parkway along Empire, the Empire Street Corridor, all the way to Colton Avenue, where the high school project is, or high school is right now. Roughly 65 parcels. The area was identified as blight. But what the biggest thing here is that the equalized assessed value had been declining over a period of time. And so, how do we stop that through economic development efforts? And in this case, the TIF is working towards that effort. You can kind of see here from the map, it's a very, really extensive area, starting with the area along Veterans Parkway and Empire. That's the area of the Colonial Plaza, and we're seeing some redevelopment activity there. We also see, from the far west side, you'll see the high school project. So, you'll see some areas that are developed commercially. You'll see some areas within this TIF corridor that are publicly owned buildings. But what you can do with the increment generated on the private construction can help infrastructure improvements and development within the publicly owned areas as well.
If I could just add very, very quickly, once again, I apologize. Just because you're, we've had at least one business in this area, just because you're in the TIF doesn't mean you get a penny, correct?
Oh, no.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that because I know that there was at least one turned down and they'd built it anyway.
So, I'd like to just kind of show you the redevelopment projects that are occurring right now. Right now, since 2016, we've had two redevelopment agreements for properties within that Empire Street Corridor Redevelopment Project area. And so, what we're seeing there is the redevelopment of the former Kmart Plaza into the Colonial Plaza Shopping Center, Dick's Sporting Goods, and a number of other major retailers in that area. And you'll see in that economic revitalization of that area, and also, the redevelopment of the former Baymont Inn into a Best Western Plus motel. The thing about the Colonial Plaza, and what you'll see as an example here, is we're not just fully incentivizing with the use of TIF. We're also using the hybrid of some sales tax rebates there. So, in the Colonial Plaza Redevelopment Project, we had roughly 75% of the increment goes back to the developer, up to a point, and then, roughly a third of the sales tax rebates. So, the entire incentives for that $11 million improvement is roughly maxed out at $4 million for incentives.
And could you clarify the "up to a point" because they're not getting it for 23 years?
Right. I would probably say, I'm not completely familiar with the redevelopment agreement, but basically, what they had was, my understanding was, on the sales tax rebate, it was valid for 10 years, up to $2 million thereabouts. And then, the remainder was the increment up to the 75% of the increment. So, that remainder of the increment can be used in other areas of that Empire Street Corridor plan for new streets, sidewalks. And I will give you an example of, within the last month, you approved the eligibility of the Fairway Drive Intersection Improvement as a TIF-eligible project in this district. And what you've done is establish that as a TIF-eligible project, and as money and increment come back into that project area, we'll be able to transfer those funds from, I believe we did it as MFT, from MFT back into, from the TIF monies to pay off that MFT monies. So, it's an opportunity to leverage that increment for other purposes aside from commercial redevelopment. So, you're seeing those infrastructure investments as well. The Downtown Southwest Redevelopment Project area was adopted in 2016, 6.4 acres, 13 parcels, or thereabouts. What you're seeing there is the area qualified for both blight and conservation areas. And I think what you're seeing here is a realization and an attempt to meet the taxing district's requirements on targeted TIFs. So, we go from, some of our earlier TIFs were rather large, the 54 blocks of the downtown area, to starting going to these targeted TIF areas, which, in this case, the Downtown Southwest TIF, which is the Elks Building, the front and center building, at roughly two and a half blocks. So, we're not doing these, we're not, we're trying to meet the objectives of the taxing districts to keep these, not only the terms, identify the terms of the TIF timeline, but also to look at TIFs that meet the minimum standards in order to bring about that redevelopment. So, those are some of the concerns or issues that we want to bring to light for the city The pending TIF in front of the city council in the coming weeks is the Downtown Southwest Redevelopment Project area, actually, I'm sorry. That should have been the proposed Downtown East Washington Redevelopment Project area. And that encompasses about four and a half blocks bordered on, basically centered on Washington Street, but bordered on the north by Jefferson and on the south on Front. It includes the former junior high school project or property. You had previously signed a redevelopment agreement for that proposal, pending the TIF approvals. What you will see on that map is that the area shown as out is a Lafayette Hotel and Apartments. That area did not qualify as blight, and therefore, it was blanked out of the TIF area. So, that would not receive incentives if requested through the TIF district. And then, the last one that we need to chat about is, the city council did approve a feasibility study for the North Main slash Chestnut Street Redevelopment Project area. I guess some folks would call this the Broman Hospital or the Elektrulux. Yeah, I'm not familiar with the terms, but I think we all know which one we're talking about. We're looking there at about eight and a half acres, five parcels. You know, this is one of those ones where, even though we've done the feasibility study, it really depends on the development that likely would occur here. So, if it were to be a sales tax generator, then you may not need to use TIF, as opposed to a residential kind of component or something, or a mixed use that may have a mix of both TIF and sales tax. So, I understand where the school district's coming from. Does everything have to be TIF? The answer is no. Can we evaluate the terms of our agreement, or the terms of the TIF? Yes. Can we make them targeted and shrink them in size so that they're not abusing the standards that we want to create for TIF? I think we can. You know, and those are some of the things we need to have in this conversation tonight. I'm open-minded about this. We want to work with our taxing district partners on moving forward on this, the economic development guidelines. I think when you approved the, the former city councils approved the economic development guidelines in 2012, I don't know that TIF was really on the radar. And so, what we're asking tonight, or in a future meeting, is to look at these guidelines as a supplement to our existing economic development guidelines. And that way, staff knows where to come from when we're negotiating or we're considering areas for redevelopment. So, I guess what I'd like to do is turn it over to Kathy Field Orr. She serves as our TIF legal counsel, and she has some perspectives on working with other communities throughout the state, on working with other taxing districts, and she's a resource for us to be able to answer some general questions on TIF.
And as we're doing this, just to look toward legal counsel, I'm certainly well within the chair's prerogative to have Kathy come forward and Barry.
That's right. We work very closely together, thank goodness.
Yeah. We've budgeted this time as in, even though it doesn't overtly say it, we can do that. I just want to clarify for everybody for the record. Yeah, Kathy?
Well, I'm sitting here listening to Bob, and I'm very concerned because maybe I have more history than most of our staff. I was called in in 2009, so I've been working for you all this time, to close out the TIFs. And I can't tell you how Bob is so correct because those initial TIFs were massive. And for several years, I was working for you, advising you and representing you in conjunction with other negotiated agreements. And they were not TIF agreements. We did Ashley Furniture. We did Green Top. We did, I'm trying to think of the sales tax. We tried to seriously focus on sales tax and using your revenue sales tax as incentives, but it just isn't always enough, as shown by the TIF project that is currently before you, which does not appear to have any retail sales. With regard to the Empire Street TIF, we have committed sales tax in each and every instance where it, in fact, happened. So, that, I'm very, very proud to be working with the city of Bloomington because, as the mayor mentioned, I cannot tell you, I have observed, please God, I haven't been a part of, many, many TIF districts that have been abused. And so, as a result of the experience and working with our interim manager and his predecessor, we have taken on a policy of the smaller the better, the smaller the better, and the only reason there should be a project. The original downtown, as you well know, and gives an example of why I am proud to support this city, is that that was a project that was proposed to us. We established the TIF, however, with the scrutiny of staff, consulting, and the concurrence of this city council. There were no incentives given. Because even though we had established the TIF, the project that was presented to us did not seem to be economically viable. So, we, as a city, and I being proud to represent you, have said no where the project did not demonstrate economic viability. And so, that makes it a very, very easy job. So, with regard to expanding your positions in terms of policies, I think you are implementing and should be put in writing to reconcile with the schools, two very important aspects. Number one, you never TIF more inch, not an inch more than you absolutely need, and you never incentivize without an absolute demonstration that there is a gap in financing and but for your assistance, the project could not, would not go forward. And those two principles, I think, will keep you on track and provide a continuation of the record that you have provided. Let me give you an example, and I looked this up because working with the school districts is paramount. A city is only as good as our school district, and that's a fact I appreciate and live by. So, that if we take the three TIFs, two in place and the one that's proposed, and we look at its effect on the school districts, which is paramount and crucial, the EAV within those three TIFs, assuming the third one is passed, is .54% of the EAV of the school district. Negligible, it would appear. However, if we succeed in those TIFs, our projections that if we were able to develop those properties would, in fact, result in an increase in the EAV from .54% to over 2%. And so, our goal is, our goal is to redevelop. Well, what if we don't do it? The reality is, and as Bob went through the history of what we are currently undertaking as current TIFs and the current policy, you have not considered a TIF unless it has been demonstrated to you that the EAV of the proposed area has continually declined. So, if we didn't do a TIF, because the ones we're talking about, there weren't ability, there isn't any ability to come up with retail sales tax, rebates, abatements, or whatever, we do not have that opportunity. We can only look to the TIF district, and if we maintain, I mean, if it continues to go down and we maintain what we've been doing, nothing. We're not providing a benefit to any taxing district or to the community. So, the fact of the matter is, your policy that you have demonstrated, and to put it in writing, sounds like a good idea to me, is to only TIF areas, as you have with these last three instances, where it has been demonstrated to you that the EAV is declining, which means, do something, please, because you're not helping anyone, not doing anything, number one. Number two, and don't incentivize. And there was a suggestion here that we have incentivized big businesses. That hasn't been my experience. In fact, we've tried to keep it with local developers, as an example, in the downtown. And I don't know where we have incentivized an Ashley Furniture or a larger group. It has been with retail sales, not with TIF dollars, where it's been a national chain. In any event, so, I believe that proposing a written resolution, adopting a policy with two perspectives, number one, you only TIF it if the EAV, if it's demonstrated the EAV has been declining, so that you should be doing something. And number two, do not incentivize any business unless it can be proven to you, as you have reviewed with the original proposal of the downtown, unless it can be recommended to you that the project would be economically viable and the request for incentive is the minimum amount needed to make the project economically viable. I don't know if that helps. I hope it has. It's been, I can't believe...
I'm sure we've got questions.
Where has the time gone? My goodness, thank you.
Kathy, if you just wait, because I'm sure there are questions. I at least have a few, and I bet the others, Alderwoman Schmidt?
Yes, thank you very much. Could you speak a little bit about, I was interested to have Bob Mart talk about the Veterans Parkway Redevelopment Project and the fact that it ended in seven years. And I think some of the conversations we've had with the school district has to do with the 23 years and, you know, the fact that you could have a child who would never, who could go through our public schools and never actually see the benefit of that TIF, which I think is a pretty striking example. So, are those... So are those things that you write in ahead of time, or, you know, what is the actual pragmatics of making that happen?
If you shorten the length of a TIF before you adopt it, you've just shot yourself in the foot because how can you then determine what is the minimal economic incentive for a particular project? And you should review this as an absolute project-by-project basis. So you don't know until it happens. Number two, the Veterans TIF, there weren't any projects in the Veterans TIF, as I recall. Do any of you know? Because that was.
Well, Juma Hotel.
It was infrastructure. The law, the TIF law mandates if you declare a TIF, and we have that possibly with the downtown since we did not incentivize and no project went forward, the first downtown TIF. If you do not have a project in seven years, you have to kill the TIF. You absolutely have to kill it. That's what the law provides. So that even with best intentions, sometimes that doesn't happen. But generally, it's got to be on a project-by-project basis.
But I think what Mr. Mart was saying was that we dissolved it because the objectives were met. So I'm just trying to figure out, how do we make that happen?
My understanding was that the TIF was established in order to reconstruct Clearwater Street?
But it didn't provide any increments, so I don't think so. My recall, and again.
To pay for debt service.
Neither, no. You have to have revenue to pay for debt service. My recall was that there were no actual incremental projects.
Well, we did have the Jumers, well, if we go back to that slide.
Yeah, Jumers was developed in it?
Yeah. Yeah, the Hotel and Conference Center.
That was closed when I got here.
Yeah. Let's see. Sorry.
Yeah, it was running the chateau.
I think it's easier to go this way.
Right.
Did we see the shirt chateau?
Yeah, it's hiding in there.
There you go.
Okay, so the projects that did generate an increment would have been the Juma Hotel and Conference Center, regardless of its name change in the future or the past, the Lakewood Plaza Shopping Center, and then the dealerships that surrounded Veterans, and I believe that's General Electric.
Except Hy-Vee did not get anything.
Well, I mean, this is maybe for Hy-Vee, but that's.
I will be honest with you, I don't know the incentive, the redevelopment agreements that were signed within that. But the increment generated by those commercial redevelopments because the road went through and the regional detention basins went in, some of these, this one was more infrastructure based that then spurred the commercial.
I'm just noting that the Hy-Vee, I think, is probably just a placeholder for where it is. Hy-Vee itself got nothing except three liquor licenses.
So I guess my question really is whether or not, is this something that gets written into the agreements about retiring it when?
Agreement, each agreement specifies a termination date. Because you have to look at each agreement, decide the minimal amount of incentive that should be awarded, and then do a projection on how long it would take to achieve that amount. And so if it's sooner or later. Now, here's the other issue, which is why I'm totally confused about this, but none of us were here, is if you approve a redevelopment project today, okay, it's built over the next year, it's then taxed, and then the receipt of the taxes, because where you're behind isn't until the following year. So before you even get out of the box, you incentivize a project, yes, but you don't even begin to reap the incentive, the actual increment, for approximately three years. So that's why I'm confused about this. It would take legally, because of our taxing system, three years to produce the increment. How they were ever able to get it done in four has me stymied.
Seven, I think it's seven.
Three before you got increment, so it would only have been four years of increment. So that's what it is. But that is history. The reality is now, in answer to your question, that's why it is so difficult to decide an end date unless it's on a project-by-project basis, and not to decide an end date for your TIF. You never know when the developer, the developer may walk in the door today, that doesn't mean he's going to begin today. He may need to negotiate with you, have an incentive awarded, and then be able to get his financing because the incentive provides the cap, the gap that is necessary to make the project economically viable. So timing is always a problem.
Alderman Black.
Thank you, thank you. Without going too far down the rabbit hole of a project that was started before I was born.
That's a mean thing to say to some of us.
I'm not going to be able to say that much longer, so.
You'll pay for that.
I'm sure. I guess I'm mostly curious at a higher level. Part of this resolution came out of conversations that we've been having with the school district about how to fairly deal with some of these issues when it comes to TIFs. How do other communities in Illinois kind of sort these sorts of challenges out? So in terms of making sure that schools are treated fairly when it comes to TIF districts, and how do municipalities interact with that? What's the best practice in other areas?
Is to adopt a policy. And let me say something else. I've been practicing municipal law only for 40 years. I was a lawyer before there was TIF. I had to become an expert in TIF because unfortunately, and it didn't start out this way, that is our major economic tool. And that is tremendously depressing to me. But because it was so used by my clients, we're the village attorney for six clients and work for at least 40 different special projects. In fact, in this own city, I've not only done TIF work, we've done code enforcement work and ordinances together. But anyhow, so the point of the story is, those are the two best maxims that you could is utilize TIF to the minimum amount necessary to provide an incentive. The baddest news, if there were such a word as baddest, the worst possible thing that I've experienced is that if you don't have a TIF, you're out of the ballgame. We have demonstrated as a city in the instances I've talked about, that where we had a retail development and we can incentivize a retailer, we have used real estate, sales tax rebates solely and only. That's to your credit. However, other than that, I don't know how to express to you the frustration the city of Bloomington feels, as do most other municipalities. The problem is, is that the schools represented the largest part of the real estate and tax, our real estate tax. And so the incentive is somehow to induce a developer by giving them some break on the tax. TIF does not give them a break on the tax, but it reimburses them for some of the costs so they can pay their tax. It's kind of, you understand TIF, so you understand how frustrating it is.
Absolutely.
Right. So when I say to you, and I'm not making it up, that I am proud to work for you as a city, it's because since 2009, you have closely followed those maxims.
So the idea that we only are subsidizing people who have their hands out doesn't make any sense?
We don't do it. We've demonstrated, you've spent a lot of time, effort, and money investigating proposed projects to make sure that you don't do this. I mean, I was here, well, I was here with you trying to work it through, and it didn't work out. So that I do know, and there are other instances where the city has said no.
And then I guess, just to go to Alderman Longway, there are also economic spillovers, especially if you've got a very tight TIF. So if we've got like one of the TIFs that's proposed, because we've only got two that have passed, or a fire cry from the 54 blocks.
Yes.
And it's very, very tight, could easily have spillovers, but it also could have an investment within it, even if it's tight, that doesn't ask for any money.
Very, very, very.
And we have one that's coming, but.
No, because you are obligated, as you have shown, to demonstrate that there's a need for an incentive. You know, somebody can come along and decide that it's an excellent spot for their particular business, so there's no need to incentivize.
All the middle on.
I had a follow-up.
Oh, excuse me, let's go to, did I interrupt you?
It's okay, don't worry.
Oh, I did, oh, okay. Well, then you go. Okay, I'm sorry. You're not asking for a second before Alderman.
It's okay, youth before beauty.
Got me. So the policies that you speak of, are they structured in the ways similar to the one that we have in front of us tonight?
We are more structured. The policies that I have seen have not been as tightly structured as you or as your staff is willing to recommend to you. It's not to say other municipalities don't follow those policies.
Sure.
But here, you're ready to put it, I mean, your staff is recommending, put it in writing. So that the schools understand you are committed to those principles.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, thank you very much. Alderman Longway.
My question is kind of a follow-up to what Scott was asking. And from what I understand, I'm a person who likes to live in harmony, as I said earlier. Want to make sure everybody's happy.
Did you talk to my kids?
So it sounds to me like the school district wants to be able to access those, some of those funds sooner than the 23 years. So is there a way to keep everybody happy?
There is a way, to the extent that we do not have a project to incentivize or an immediate use that improves the area, and especially the one that's presented to you now, I mean, it's such a small area, there's very little infrastructure that can be done, that surplus should be declared as often as humanly possible. There is always a way to, if a TIF district impacts a taxing district in any way, and I'll give you an example. One of the first examples I had, it was in a shopping center, and because of the way the redevelopment of the shopping center would occur, the bus barn for the school had to be moved, that had to be paid for out of TIF. Any impact that a development has on a school. You know the law protects schools, that if there is a residential development, and the residential development has children, that results in an increase of the population of the school district. The TIF Act has a formula for how you must pay that. We have not dealt with residential TIFs. We kind of stay away from them and try to utilize it more for the commercial areas, which is, again, a very good policy. So yes, to the extent the taxing district has an impact in dollars and cents because of some development, they should be reimbursed, number one, and the law provides for that. Number two, if there are funds that are not committed and not to be utilized for development or improvement in the TIF districts, those should be declared a surplus. In fact, the law says if you have incremental dollars in your TIF and you don't have a committed project for a period of three years, you must declare it surplus. And that's a way to protect the taxing districts. We haven't been in that situation, but for as long as you allow me to continue work for you, we will monitor that to make sure that would not occur without a resolution presented to the city council for the declaration of surplus. It's very difficult, though, before the project walks in the door, to determine what amount of surplus you could have, which I understand would be of great interest to the school districts. However, it kind of eliminates or reduces your ability to provide an incentive when you may absolutely determine it's crucial to a development that's very important to the city.
Other questions? Alderman Bray.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much for your thoughtful responses and for explaining the landscape of TIF to us. So as we take up this ordinance, we're looking to establish a philosophy that will increase revenues overall for our taxing districts and achieves some objectives in revitalizing our city and our blighted areas. When we think about adding additional philosophy, if we want to embed other philosophy, other than other concepts potentially into this ordinance, can you talk a little bit about the concepts of prevailing wage and the concept of project labor agreements? And what I'm thinking of here is, you know, how do we maximize the economic development potential that is TIF?
I am going, with your permission, I'm going to defer to our city attorney because the city has a resolution in place for, it's a year old, that requires prevailing wage in conjunction with economic development agreements.
Do you want to talk about the PLAs first, though?
Pervailing wage?
No, the project labor agreements.
Project labor agreements. To the suggestion, we do not have a mandate on project labor agreements with regard to using local contractors, if that's what you're saying, because you run into snags in terms of discrimination and in terms of our city collective bargaining agreements. So that we have not made a mandate, but we have mandated prevailing wage. So that's where I defer to Jeff.
Yeah, so in the prevailing wage ordinance that you adopt every year, there is a provision, and it's not kind of the standard, it's not required, but you do have a provision in there that says that prevailing wage should apply to private commercial economic development projects directly supported by public funds, including projects supported by tax increment findings, financing or tax incentives of any kind. And then there are some other provisions about that as well. So you do already require in your prevailing wage ordinance, it actually is approved every June, the new one will be coming up in the next couple of meetings. So you do have language on requiring prevailing wage for TIF projects. Now that said, we do not have, as Kathy Orr said, we do not have language in there about PLAs. You know, that's, you know, something I think we'd have to.
It's difficult to work that type of a commitment with prevailing wage and collective bargaining agreements and utilization of services of unions because it's not often that, the base may be here, but the individuals. How do you judge it? How do you review it? Why would you want to get into laborers? So it gets to be very, very touchy as to where a laborer lives, as opposed to using local businesses to the greatest extent possible. That doesn't guarantee residency or that we're using local laborers.
See, thank you very much. Thank you both.
Other questions? Okay?
Terry, sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So I guess that's a topic that if we're talking about philosophies and how we structure these, and this isn't, to me, an urgent document that needs to be approved, you know, we've heard some conversation about the school districts, I'd be interested in exploring more about what the implications of a PLA would be. And maybe it's, we encourage through TIF districts, you know, hire local, buy local, we already have one of that, we have another ordinance out there.
And our legal limitations as to how much we can demand, that, before you do that, that should be looked into.
If we're going to go back and talk about our philosophy, and that's going to impact us, this, what, in 2012, I mean, that's six years, I'd like to get some more information about what that looks like, because that's important to me as much as it's important to making sure that the school's voice is being heard. So I'm not ready to vote on this at this point in time. I'd like to get more information on those two pieces prior to a final vote.
Bob, did you want to?
Well, just to continue the conversation, I think it's only fair that our taxing district partners and economic development partners have an opportunity to present their perspectives on TIF. And so I guess to the clerk, I'd say, if there's anyone to speak, or the mayor?
Yes, Barry, I know you wanted to speak.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. It's been interesting listening to this conversation, and I know it's not an easy conversation. It's something that we've been talking about for a number of years in this district, the impact of this. I want to go back to a couple of comments that have been made here tonight. Alderman Black, you asked a question of what are some communities doing relative to dealing with this? I can't speak to all of them, but I can tell you that nearly half of the counties in the state of Illinois now have the countywide sales tax. Some of those counties, you can attribute that directly to school districts being impacted by TIFs. We're not one of those counties. If you recall, we were a county that put that on the ballot several years ago. It failed miserably, and then we had the city and the town both enacted to increase that on their own. And you've got various things that you've allocated that money to. That was your prerogative to do that. Now, I can tell you that as school districts, and I can't speak for everyone in the county, but I can certainly tell you my colleagues that I talk to do not feel really good about trying to go back to the ballot to try to use that as a means to address some of our needs. And that only carries with it facility needs. It does not allow us to pay for things that really matter in the classrooms, not that facilities don't matter. facilities don't matter, because they very much do. I also want to mention that one of the comments that Mr. Mark made, and this is just a clarification, it's not a big deal, but when we talk about the Empire Street corridor, that area that runs from basically Veterans Parkway all the way to Tuana Plaza, captures Bloomington High School and the Junior High School within that, we qualify as a conservation area. It was kind of described as a blighted area. In totality, I do not want people walking out of here thinking that Bloomington High School and Bloomington Junior High are blighted areas. It's anything but that when you drive down that corridor today. And I think that hopefully that signals to you that we see our role in economic development as a true partner, and we see the vital need for that. We really do think that's important. I also want to talk just briefly about the downtown TIF that ended in 2009, that 23-year TIF, where you saw that chart where we had some growth. I encourage you to go do some research and look at the cost of living and how that went up over that same time, and see if that growth was right in line with that. I'm not so sure it was. Regardless of that, I can tell you that as it grew from roughly $12 million to over $30 million, there was nothing that rolled back to the school district. That increment for the school district stayed at that amount during that time. So it's not like we had additional dollars that were coming to us on the basis of that TIF. And now we're at a time where that has rolled off, basically we started to see some additional dollars come to us, I believe it was in 2010, 11, 12, somewhere in that realm. But we're now at a point in time where all of us know that economic development is tough to come by. That's why you're talking about TIFs. And we get that. We see that we're a vital partner, we understand that you play a vital role, and so do we. All of the city council members here are elected officials, you see the people in the purple shirts, those are elected officials as well, they answer to the taxpayers of Bloomington District 87, which is about 10 and a half square miles within the city limits of Bloomington. So we completely understand the importance of that. So if I get a little pointed in my comments, it's not because we haven't had good communication with Mr. Rasmussen, more recently with Mr. Jurgens, conversations with you as individuals, it's just simply to impart on you collectively how we not only feel, but what we believe in relative to TIFs. For many years, this school district has requested that TIFs be structured so that we receive some direct benefit before the end of the typical 23-year life. And I appreciate that there's been some conversation about that. And as you look at the resolution that's been put in your packet tonight, there's been some dialogue and back-and-forth discussion that's happened about that. But know that we do not agree to what is in there currently. We'd like to see more teeth into that. Properties can be removed from the TIF when they are fully developed, like the one that they recently did in Norwalk. Mayor, you mentioned that. There are things that could be really good for us, that's one example of that. District 87's share of the increment can be less than 100% of the tax rate or phased out over the life of the TIF. There was some talk about the Veterans Parkway one, but I would caution you on that and tell you the facts, because it doesn't sound like we have that tonight. The city could simply compensate District 87 for the loss of its increment. I doubt that that's going to happen, but I appreciate your comments about, can we get it less than 23 years? We've been asking for that for a long time. At the February 12 council meeting, several council members expressed concerns regarding TIF. We thank you for that. It was well-stated that a joint resolution or memorandum of understanding should be agreed upon between the city and the school district as to TIF projects. As it was also stated by several council members, that District 87 is looking for relief from the standard all-in-for-23-year TIF. We appreciate that you've talked about that tonight. There's been a great deal of debate about the effectiveness of TIF. You've heard tonight how important they are, their role in economic development, but you should also do your research that they're not always the answer. Some examples were given tonight. The green top grocery area, that was an abatement, a five-year tax abatement, short-term, did the job, I think everyone was happy with that, we were on board with that. That, by the way, is a tax incentive that you have to get approved by the taxing bodies. TIF is not one where you have to do that. If a TIF spurs development, it is typically within the TIF and not outside the TIF where there are no incentives offered. The idea that we are not hurt, we being District 87, by a TIF because it will still be receiving the same amount of revenue received before the TIF is simply wrong. Every year, District 87 levies an amount it needs to educate its students. We keep talking about the TIF area, the money goes to development, we've talked about roads, intersections, I've heard. Not once have I heard money going to the education of the kids in the public school district that is within those TIF boundaries. And that ought to be a priority. To the extent that the District 87's levy goes to the developer, it's not going to educate students. So what I think we're asking of you is, if you believe that public education is important, and I know you do, I'm not suggesting you don't, we would simply say, state it in the resolution. And that doesn't just hold for District 87. You've got a Unit 5 school district out there that was, is within the city limits of Bloomington as well. And if you support us in the idea that the school district and other taxing bodies should share in the benefits of TIF during the life of the TIF, then we'd also ask that you state that in your resolution. So on behalf of these folks standing behind, or sitting behind me, I'm not asking them to parade up here and talk to you tonight, but know that this is what we feel collectively. We thank you for your consideration, we're certainly more than willing to continue that dialogue, and we want to be good partners when it comes to economic development, because we know we all benefit from that. We do as a school district, we know you do as a city. And when I talk to you individually, I know you care. So do we. It's not that we believe that TIFs are not the answer, you know, on select occasions, but more and more, we're feeling that there isn't an appetite to go less for the largest taxing body, especially at a time when state dollars are tough to come by, our assessed values are flat, sometimes go down, or if they go up, it's very, very small. Look at your own tax bills, you can probably tell that yourself. And we're really working hard to do right by what we have, just like you are with your money. So I thank you.
Thank you. If you could, are there any questions of Mr. Riley? Thank you, and thank you again for all you do, as we have, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mayor.
We do know that, as we said before, there are no cities that are thriving that don't have great school systems. So, anyway.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for presenting that. I mean, I think that you're right, that all of us up here appreciate the position that the state has put the school districts in everywhere, well, in every educational institution, not just our schools, our high schools. But, you know, I think that, I appreciate the fact that we've had a lot of open conversations in order to keep the dialogue going. It's very easy to stop that and start pointing fingers at each other. So, you know, thank you to you and to all the members of the school board, because we all know, sitting up here, that balancing budgets right now is, well, a pretty sucky process overall. There are better ways to say that, but that's got the most oomph to it. Yeah. Yeah, I just, a couple of thoughts. So I was actually the president of the Downtown Bloomington Association at the time where that TIF was shutting down. And I have random numbers that are forever lodged in my head, so I know that the downtown area, I figured it out, outpaced inflation by 5% inside of that TIF district in there. And we also had calculated out at the time that the increment, once the increment got released back to both the city and to the school district, there was a 23-year buildup period for that, that sales tax increment, but we figured out it was going to be completely repaid in seven. So I'm just curious, you said that, you know, when we were talking about, in your comments you said that when, the phrase that the school district's not hurt when we lock an EAV in on a property in an area, if that EAV's been going down, how is the school district hurt if we can actually stop the going down and go back up? I don't know if that made sense or not, but...
Well, if the EAV is going down, it obviously hurts. It hurts all of us. So there's no, there's no way around that. If you're saying that EAV goes down, obviously that hurts the bottom line of any taxing body that is to receive dollars based off of EAV.
And I think that's one of our major considerations that we've been using, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the EAV's got to be going down for it to be considered a blighted area, and pretty much every TIF that we've looked at, that I'm aware of, has had that qualification of the blighted area in there, with the exception of the school district not being blighted, right? Or the high school and the junior high not being blighted. Conservation area, I think was a good phrase, right?
That's the official phrase, I believe. It's not mine.
Yeah, okay, good. You know, I'm just, I appreciate where you guys are at, and we want to do right for the school districts, so I think we've got a lot of things we've been talking about. But, you know, it's, I just don't want to, I want to make sure that we're on the straight, that there are times where we don't have opportunities to do anything other than the TIF. But I can think of a bunch of other projects that we've done, you know, where we've just done property tax abatements, so the five-year ones like you're talking about. I think of Ruth &amp; Joe Haney with the Salvation Army former building, literally had a wall fall into the road, and now it's eight beautiful apartments and condos in there, and I think that was a five-year property tax abatement. So, you know, there are, I think, I can think of multiple examples where we have used other things, you know? And I like the fact that this ordinance says TIF will be the last thing we look at when nothing else works.
And I think you're actually giving the answer that I would give you, that when you look at the assessed values that could be going down in a particular area, and you're considering development, we would ask that you look at those other ways to incentivize, if incentivizing is the way that we have to go. And we recognize that that, you're in competition, we're all in competition for other communities, we know that. What we're trying to impart on you is, look at other ways to incentivize, but not only look at that, if you determine that a TIF is your one and only best option, then look at ways you can work with the taxing bodies, in particular, the school district, to lessen the impact of it on the school district. So I would tell you to start by looking at other ways that are shorter-term as opposed to the 23-year TIF.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're all in agreement on that part, so, thank you.
Yes, all the woman, Burgus.
I don't have any questions, just a couple of comments based on the conversation this evening, which I think has been very, very helpful across the board in understanding TIFs better and getting to an idea of what it is we're here to do. And I'm really pleased, I think if there's a theme that's developing, it's this notion that we are here to collaborate, and that economic development is about partnership and working together for the benefit of the city and everyone who lives here, and all the taxing bodies. And I think very clearly, to me, the message tonight is that the way to have a very effective and trusting partnership is to have a written document that clearly sets forth our goals and how we're going to go about doing our business. And so I'm excited about this policy, I think it'll go a long way in helping all of us make sure that our collaborations are successful. But I did want to echo Scott's thoughts for this evening, that I think it's too soon to vote, right? I think, and for two reasons, very similar to what Scott said. Number one, I think we should give this more time to work with the school district, and also any other, any other taxing bodies who want to provide comments to us, so that we can continue to move towards consensus. We're getting pretty close, I think. I think we've come a long way into getting a document that everyone agrees states our shared values, and that's very exciting, and I think that's a good goal to continue working towards. The other one is bringing up a new potential value, which is not a new one to the community, which is this notion of prevailing wage, potentially project labor agreements. I think that conversation has value as well, to make sure at the very least that this document, whatever we end up voting on, reflects those policies that are already in place. And, you know, it's as good a time as any to look at whether or not we want to add additional thoughts or processes to that, to make sure that when we adopt a final policy, it's really broad and encompasses everything we want to take into account. So, you know, I think that a little more time to have this conversation, I don't know if anyone else has a thought process on how long that might take, but certainly, I'm excited at the progress we've made and hope that we can get to a point where we'll be ready to vote on something in the near future. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions, comments of Mr. Riley? Thank you so much, Barry.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, Kathy.
I want to have a clarification, what Alderman said.
If you'd come to the microphone.
I just want a clarification, because this is important to the understanding. It is not a requirement that the EAV go down to be blighted. That's just one of the requirements. But it has been a policy of this city, and that's why putting that into a resolution as one of our policies takes us one step closer to collaboration than the law would otherwise mandate. So I just wanted to let you know. That's what's been mandated here.
And related to that, if one of the TIFs that we have, we have sort of two in progress, two that have been established, one has only one piece of commercial property, everything else is zero, it's either owned by Illinois Westland or the city of Bloomington, does that, what do we do about something like that if something's flat, if it's zero?
Um, that means...
We're not getting any money, and the school district is getting no money.
No, so that you are encouraged to TIF it, and that's a win-win for everyone. When it starts out at zero...
But if you're at zero, you can't be declining.
Correct. You can't be declining, but however, it also means, I think that's even a better situation than the EAV going down, because you're already at zero.
Is our policy going to harm, again, we only have one situation like that?
I don't, I don't think it would ever, ever be misunderstood that the policy would apply to that, because that...
Something that is zero...
Obviously benefits no one. And the plus about that is that, because every nickel would be increment, the first penny would be increment. Those are the types of developments that give you better opportunity to collaborate with the taxing districts, because the increment will be immediate and it will be sufficient if we keep part B of our policy, which is to incentivize as minimally as necessary to get the development underway.
And if I could, related to that, because you said something else that, at least at 500 feet, without digging deeper, might be viewed as contradictory, and I think I know what the answer is, but I'm asking that question, where you had said you would shoot yourself in the foot if you did not do something like a 23-year TIF to start, because you don't know how long?
Because you don't know what, that doesn't mean, just because it's a 23-year TIF...
Don't give people money.
That doesn't negate the fact that you could still collaborate and utilize the percentage that you don't require for an incentive. I think that that is more important, if I may, in my opinion, that may be more important, because you may need a percentage of the TIF, or one project in the TIF generates increase in values of the immediately surrounding buildings. So you do have increment that is obviously not committed in any way, shape, or form to a particular project, which gives you an opportunity to declare surplus or to assist a school district or any other taxing district, as the needs may be shown.
And just to clarify for everybody, and for the record, by declaring a surplus, the money goes back to the taxing bodies, the school district and all the taxing bodies?
In proportion to their tax, their tax levy, which would be, any surplus is most beneficial, fortunately, to the school.
So, and so if we did have a project where somebody didn't even ask us for money, for TIF money that happened to be in the TIF district, that were, the moment that people began to pay in addition, or any money on a taxing, or on a property, that would all be instantly surplus?
Yes, no, it wouldn't be, because you have other goals in your TIF. It would be surplus after you fix the street, or the utilities, or, you know, water...
Whatever we've agreed on.
Whatever, yes. So that, but you would assume that at some early year, there would be money to distribute a surplus.
Thank you so much, Barry.
Let me just add, she had mentioned it before, that hasn't happened. It's never happened. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that hasn't happened.
What happened?
A surplus coming back to the taxing bodies in our history here. Maybe it has, but...
We're going to try to break that trend for you.
I hope you do. And the other thing I would add is that, remember, you can, you can choose to do less than 100% of the increment from District 87. You don't have to do that. And those things can be worked in, those are the kinds of things we would encourage you to think about, because it just seems as though it's all in. And we're saying that, let's look at ways to lessen the impact on the school district. I understand that sometimes that may not be feasible to do, but that's, those are the things that we really want you to think about.
Thank you. All the men, all the women, excuse me, Bray.
Just thank you, Mayor. So just for a quick clarification, you were talking about ways to minimize impact on the school... to minimize impact on, on the school, and the operation of the school, and you'd made mention of, of limiting use of residential projects in TIF. Can you speak a little bit about that? Because obviously that has an impact when you have children-
We have as a city-
If you'd speak in the microphone, please, I'm sorry.
We have as a city, we have, the Empire Street project has no residential, the proposed Downtown Washington has no residential at this time, we assume it's all zoned as commercial, correct? Is there a building in there that's residential?
Elderly apartments.
It doesn't unpack the school districts, what we have, what we have proposed. The, the only other problem is that we can't declare surplus or rework with one taxing district. If you have surplus, it's all or none, and you can't make a payment in lieu of taxes without distributing equally to all of the taxing districts, so that if you took a proportionate share of the school district, unfortunately, the way the law is written, we couldn't give it back directly to the school district.
And just because there's no residential doesn't mean there isn't an impact on the school district. You take that Empire Street corridor TIF, the sales tax is a 10-year sales tax, the city receives that benefit after 10 years, as that increment grows, and it's growing, because the area's doing fairly well, is my understanding, the school district does not receive a dime of that. If that's incorrect, please let us know.
Of the sales tax, but that doesn't mean that, that, that the property taxes are frozen for 23 years. Mr. Mart, do you want to-
It's related to a specific redevelopment agreement for the Colonial Plaza project, and not for the entire TIF district.
But is Mr. Riley correct?
That there is a sales, we provide-
No, no, I mean beyond the, 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 will the, if, if this continues and assessments continue to go up, will that not help the school districts? We have not agreed to a 23-year TIF for them, right?
The current TIF is scheduled for 23 years in order to meet the objective-
But I mean, the, the abatement to the developer.
So I, I don't have the redevelopment agreement in front of me, but essentially, what you offered that developer was 75% of the increment from that development goes back to the developer, and there was a time, a time period for that.
Time period, right.
And then there was also a, as I recall, a sales tax rebate for a period of 10 years. The total increment, or the total incentive for that development was $4 million for a minimum of $11 million in investment, and a threshold of sales tax generated in order to receive those incentives.
So any money that, obviously, we're still at that critical point that I think Kathy Orr mentioned, where we still have not received any surplus money, but at the point that we begin to, to, or maybe we're about to cross it, when we hit 4 million, that's like a circuit breaker. And so that money then goes back to District 87 and to us?
No, it goes, it goes back, it's still generating an increment, and the sales tax as a, as the hybrid incentive, they're not getting sales tax revenue from-
Right.
Any of the community, any of the communities in this area.
Right, right.
So, so-
No, I'm talking only about the property tax.
The way the agreement was structured, and Superintendent is absolutely correct, the way the agreement was structured was a maximum amount, for 10 years, we put in sales tax, after that, the balance due would be, would be with the real estate taxes, with a maximum of a 20-year term. However, as Mr. Mart says, only 75% of the real estate taxes are committed to the project. So there's a 25% play, even with the sales tax, even with the real estate for 20, 20 years, so that there may be, when it's at its full value, so there will always be a potential, we pray, that there might be surplus. But there are other items that we want to fill in, in the Empire Street project, and as we overcome those infrastructure, yes, hopefully before 23 years, there will be declarations of surplus. But right now, the projections are just to get the show on the road with the development we're trying to incentivize. But you're absolutely correct with facts.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question about that?
Oh, yeah, Alderman, Alderwoman, excuse me, Burgess.
I just want to make sure I understand what was just said. So even once that development meets the goals of this development agreement, when that development agreement is no longer in play, it goes away, they don't, that, that property doesn't drop out of the TIF?
No, it does not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Excuse, go ahead.
But it could, we could choose to move it out of the TIF.
It could, there's various ways that we either, we keep, most school districts, in my experience, prefers to keep it in and declare surplus. You would have to look at the dollars and cents at that time, the tax rate at the time, when you get there, you sit down and you look at, and you work collaboratively, as to what would be a better action on the part of the city council to benefit the school district, and that's what we generally, to get there is a wonderful thing, it's a wonderful problem to have, I hope we have it soon.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Black.
I was going to make a motion, I don't know if Jamie had a question.
Oh, Jamie.
I had another question, I'm sorry.
You did have a question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So this particular agreement we're talking about, and I'm just trying to get clarification that might move forward with it, the, the agreement says that they get 75% of any increases in that TIF district, the developer does, I think that's what you said?
In the specific redevelopment project area, and not the entire district. So when we're looking at the Colonial Plaza redevelopment project, 75% of the increment generated within the legal description of that project goes back to the developer.
Is that common, to have it be a percentage versus a flat dollar amount? Like if there-
It's both.
It has a threshold at the top.
It's a percentage of the increment with a cap.
Okay, so it's whichever one happens first, then it stops?
Right, so that it's a very, very, you only want to give the developer the specific limit, the limited amount they need to get the show on the road, so that you always decide the formula of how it will be distributed on an annual basis, with a cap as to the maximum amount.
I just wanted to make sure there was a cap somewhere in there, because I wasn't in council that time.
So the agreement says the term of this agreement shall end the first to occur, receipt of the cap amount, or the termination of the TIF. So you hope to get it done long before 23 years.
Okay.
I, I thought I had my draft copy of the, of that, but we can provide that, it's actually online, the redevelopment agreement is online, when you go into our economic development website, you'll see the redevelopment agreements that are, that are already in place, and those are easily available to take a quick read and-
As long as there's always a cap, that's what I want. I don't want it to be open-ended, so.
Right, right.
I just wanted to kind of continue briefly with the proposed resolution, and see that we can kind of-
Before we do that, you had a motion.
I do.
Okay, well, then I want, we want to continue the, the proposed resolution, before we do the motion.
It was just, this, this is the reason we're here tonight, on, on discussing TIFs, and it wasn't to elaborate on individual TIFs, TIF project areas. So you'll see within the resolution, there is, there is an, an understanding that there are economic development incentives that we, that the city can use in certain instances. And in this case, we're talking about TIF specifically. So under Section 3 of the proposed resolution, this is the city's wording, the school district has an alternate wording that you can compare and contrast against where we're at, but the, there's, there are some common themes here that we're in general agreement with, and, and they can offer their, their perspectives on this. But the first one, under Section 3A, "The city manager shall thoroughly consider the available alternatives to TIF and review the benefits of the alternatives to TIF with the private developers and the taxing districts." I think communication is key to us, and I think we're learning about that tonight. We've had some meetings with the school district, and I think, you know, we're taking that to heart. So I think that communication is, is available to us. B, "The city manager shall file a written report with the city council listing the alternatives to TIF, and detailing the communications held with the private developers and the taxing districts regarding the alternatives to TIFs and their use." So I think, again, this is another communication tool that the city manager, with input from staff, can get that information, you know, to the, to the city council. I think there's a question here as to, at what point do we, are our negotiations open to the public, and I think there's a certain point here where some of our draft work probably wouldn't be directly communicated, but it's something that we would impart to our, to our people here. Number C, "The city manager shall provide an opportunity for the appointed leaders of the taxing district to review, prior to adoption by the city council, the city council's purpose and basis for creation of a new redevelopment project area, which is a TIF district, and/or consideration of a re, a new development or redevelopment agreement that utilizes the TIF Act. The city manager shall also maintain communication between the city and the taxing districts in regard to the city's implementation of the redevelopment plans for each of these cities designated redevelopment project areas." I think this is a, something that we could, when we have a joint review board meeting, it's something that we can thoroughly discuss at that time, and we can also have some inner, inner office communications between the taxing districts and our city, city manager. D, "With regard to the use of the TIF Act and the creation of a new redevelopment project area, the, the city pledges to," oh, I hate this thing, and this is the-
Think you had it.
Section three, or, D 1 through 6. Oh, next one over? This one? This was the first one, D, and then this is the follow-up, continuing on there. Oh, yeah, oh, no. I grew up in the wrong age, I think. Okay, now tell me what?
No, correct.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Okay, this is where we, we start kind of blending some ideas, and the first one is D 1, "Compensate each taxing district for any demands made upon it as a result of an approved development or redevelopment project as required by the TIF Act." We're going to follow the TIF Act, and if it's, if it's appropriate to compensate a taxing district, then we're going to appropriately compensate a taxing district. Number 2, "Limit the term of the designation of a redevelopment project area to the time required to achieve the completion of the redevelopment project plan and payment of the city's obligations to any project." So we've talked before about how do we, if the plan objectives have been achieved, can we dissolve the TIF early, can we reduce the term of the TIF, and I think that's possible. I think once we, you know, I think once we get into those redevelopment projects, and the developers' obligations and incentives are met, we can certainly dissolve the TIFs. Number 3, "Take care to ensure that only those parcels of real estate which are not likely to be developed or redeveloped without the benefit of TIF Act are included within the boundary of the redevelopment project area." I think we've learned our lesson, you're seeing these targeted TIFs, wherein these blocks that are two and a half, four and a half block areas, we're not doing these expansive TIFs that we had done in, in the mid-'80s. Number 4, "Ensure that all newly created incremental tax revenue not needed for the implementation of the redevelopment plan be declared surplus for distributing to the taxing districts." We had a good discussion about that this evening, about appropriately incentivizing the developer, and then if there is some surplus, that that surplus can be directed to, back to the taxing districts, and I think that's an appropriate communication. "Review each redevelopment project annually and report to the taxing districts in writing as to the availability of surplus funds and the intended use of surplus funds." I think that's something we would do as part of our annual joint review board meetings, and, and this is a specific request, and I think we can meet this request. Number 6, "Limit the term of the redevelopment agreements, and otherwise ensure that the amount of any incentive to a private developer be limited to the minimal amount necessary to fund the shortfall of the redevelopment project, as demonstrated by the developer in order to proceed with the redevelopment project." I don't have a problem, as a staff member, recommending this wording. I think what I have problem, concern, is that the wording proposed by the school district basically negates the, the use of TIF at all. And so the request for a, to be essentially made whole through a TIF project doesn't allow us any extra money to fund these private developments. So you, you all have copies of the school district's points, what I did want to do is just touch base on this, so we can continue our conversation, if not this meeting, certainly at another meeting, and I know that you had a motion that you wanted to-
Okay, but before we do that, there's a couple things. First of all, are there any other school district, school, any other taxing district here, or Unit 5, which I guess is the physical majority of our city? I learned that tonight, I thought it was about 50/50, I was wrong. Ms. Orr, I wonder if you would come up, is there any other, in commenting with Mr. Mart's comment, as quickly as possible, and we'll go to a motion, are there, is there any downside to that, or to this particular policy, or the school district's amendment?
I concur with what Mr. Mart said, I think this, these are-
If you'd come first.
I think what has been recommended by the Community Development Department seriously narrows the scope and your focus in utilizing TIF, and that to commit to the taxing districts, not only the school, a proportionate share of revenues, or a time limit at the beginning, really would limit your ability to incentivize any project. Your commitment in this to try to use any incentive other than TIF, I think, is crucial to the taxing districts, and if you follow that in and of itself, I think we will be doing a service to the community that, that they deserve.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Black.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we table this policy to a date uncertain with-
Publicly discussion?
Yeah. Giving the staff direction the following items. Number 1, review a component to the policy that is for shop local, buy local, hire local, PLAs, what are the implications in, in that conversation with this policy, and also circling back in perhaps the three-on-one meetings, or individually, where each council member stands, and some of the nuances of their, their comfort level, and what we want to see based on the staff recommendations. Yeah, I think that, I think that captures our conversation. Related to the conversation with the school district specifically, thank you.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Alderwoman Bray. Alderwoman Hellman.
I, I'm not comfortable with an unspecified date to bring this back for discussion.
There was no date certain?
No date certain, I would-
Two months?
I would say, if we could discuss it at the next committee of the whole, and then vote.
Don't we have a due date for this proposed East Washington TIF that we have to meet?
Well, one doesn't necessarily, I mean, the council has suggested-
They are, they have been, to this point, they've been linked, where-
Right.
We've said we did not want to pass that TIF, or talk about that TIF without tonight's discussion.
Correct.
So if they continue to be linked, we have 90 days from the public hearing of that TIF, I thought.
That's true.
So if those two are going to remain linked, we have a specified window that we have to have that discussion, and the good point-
Well, they're, I think they're linked only because you chose to link them, and if you chose to continue to link them, we continue to do that, but this discussion on the policy could go forward, and you could, if you wanted to, go ahead and act on the East Washington Street TIF, or we could let that one go and, and take it up later, depending on the council's preference.
Alderwoman Schmidt.
Would we have, would we have room on the committee of the whole in-
June?
Three weeks? Yeah.
Sure, we, we have room on that for whatever the council would desire to do, we can, we can make that a priority. I would ask, I'm not sure what the date is, Bob, do you remember what the date is for 90 days from that public hearing?
I believe it was July 9th meeting, was our, our intended to, that was our drop-dead deadline, unless we have to re-advertise a, a public hearing.
No, we can't.
We have to start all over.
You can't start, was that what you said, I'm sorry.
If, the, the law says that the ordinances must be introduced, not less than 14, nor more than 90. So Bob is saying the drop-dead date is July 19?
9.
9, I'm sorry. So if you fail to do it, then you have to start all over.
I see, okay, thank you, thanks.
I, I didn't want to assume staff resources on this topic, nor did I know, was aware of what would be coming up on the June committee of the whole. I'm fine if you're comfortable thinking that we can bring this back on a June committee of the whole, for maybe a final vote the week after.
Yes, we could do that. The main event that we had for the committee of the whole in June was CIP, but there's nothing urgent on that, we could do this first and move CIP back to the next committee of the whole.
Okay.
Okay, other-
Do you want to amend the-
Okay, we had, the maker was Black, the second was Bray. Are you okay with the, the discussion, the committee of the whole on this discussion, excuse me, a discussion of, in the committee of the whole on June 11th, as part of your motion? Was it 18? Oh, 18, that's right.
Committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole.
June.
June committee of the whole, forget dates then, okay. You go, okay, and at this point, we'll go ahead and vote on this item. The motion- The motion carries eight to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much, and thank you for a productive conversation. Thank you to our District 87 partners for coming and joining us for the beginning of what will inevitably be a long conversation. Thank you so much. At this point, Mr. Rasmussen.
Thank you very much. We have, actually I have two slides for you today as part of the city manager discussion. One is the, one that I want to list of the upcoming events in the next month, and we've included here both the public, the Parks and Recreation, Grosse Arena, the Ice Center, the Library, and the Bloomington Center for the Performing Arts, and so there's lots going on in the next month. But I did want to point out, down, if you, the last first item we have this weekend, which is Cogs and Corsets, which is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we've listed the events there. There are still tickets available, and I'd suggest anyone who is not going to join us in this second annual event can get tickets now, and they're available from the Downtime Development Division. Thank you very much, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, and you made my job a little easier, because I was going to talk about Cogs and Corsets as well, although being as low-tech as I am, I did not have a slide. So, anyway, the thing I wanted also to thank was, we had a great turnout yesterday for the Memorial Day Parade. I wanted to thank Steve Rasmussen and Old Woman Hellman for holding the city sign. As I ran back and forth, at least you did not have to drive for me in cold weather, but thank you very much, Mr. Rasmussen.
Thank you very much. It was only 96 degrees out there as you're running back and forth on the sidelines.
It's from one extreme to the next. Okay, and that's all I have. Alderman, comments? Okay, is there a motion? Oh, sorry.
And if you don't like any of these activities, there's the 27th Annual British Car Festival at the David Davis Mansion on Sunday afternoon, nine, or Sunday, 9 to 3, 150 vintage antique, or vintage British cars, so if any of these things don't appeal to you.
That's right, and it's cool, having been a previous owner of a British car. But, anyway.
Shameful plug, sorry.
That might have been a shameful plug, although I have to say, the two happiest days of my life were the day I bought it and the day I sold it. At this point, is there a motion to dismiss, excuse me, to adjourn? A move by Alderman Black, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Old Woman Hellman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.